Hi, Sheldon.
I'm Sheldon.
Unfortunately, we don't have a flag in here, but we do have one out there on the pole. Please stand.
I am the president of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, America, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Do I have a motion to adopt the agenda?
Move your adopt agenda.
Okay.
I'd like to make a change. I'd like to change the public comment and go to open this prior to public comment.
Okay.
Amending my motion to make that change.
Okay, motion made. Second amendment. Both in favor?
Aye.
Fine. All right, we'll move on down. Considering ordinance number seven seven six, amending the comprehensive plan map and zoning map of applicant seven three nine.
I'm gonna make a motion that we remand us back to planning because the public comment has been closed. In order to reopen it, it has to go back to planning. So if you guys all heard and for it to go on record, it means remanding back to planning. It was the right way to do that. So I make a motion to remand us back to planning for a further comment due to the response of the community on this topic.
I'll second the motion.
Motion made, second amendment.
Aye.
Okay.
We'll move on to Mayor DeNast's publicist, Max DeNast's. Oh, I'm sorry, I'm not for the reason that I don't want the public comment, but, and we may get more on this, but I think it also needs included possibly to be noticed because I know at least one of the adjacent owners present tonight didn't get notified or do anything.
I would agree with that.
There's a three.
At least I'm watching. So, so as I was talking to Nick Cannon, our planning director before he was a town, the applicant is the one that normally prepares the adjacent list. And I didn't realize that. It's definitely what happens at the county. Normally, the planner at the county would notify me about the county, which is what I knew. For things in town, yeah, that process needs probably worked out, I guess, to make sure that we're verifying that at minimum. And then there may be an easier way to streamline that from what we put the county to verify. So, but that, that's a very important process within the land use decision because they're all adjacent owners are notified in a timely manner. So at, at the original hearing, which happened at the planning commission level, which many of you didn't, weren't even aware of, so that, that should happen. So I was, I am opposed just for record of remanding it, only on that. Because ultimately, a land use decision is going to end up in our, our body to adopt anyways. So we can take public comments, I believe, at any time, and it still goes on record. So, and also by remanding it to the decision, which was just now approved four to one. So it's, this file is going to be reheard by the planning commission. You know, you're guys as far as today, I have no problem with them going on the record today because we don't want to waste your time and have to go back to that step. And if that's something you guys want to have everybody come back to, that's, I guess we can take any of the council's advice on. But, you know, many, many people don't care. If we've got the baby set up, there's no reason why.
Public comments could be taken, but they cannot be part of the public hearing once it's been closed, it's been closed. That's why I was asking the councilors how, as we get all of these heard, and then that way, and both sides really should have. So we advocate and the decision should both have a chance to address each other. So what makes the most sense, having it go back to planning, that, that will start the whole process over. So three man goes back to planning commission, there will be a hearing, both sides will be able to give testimony back and forth, and then there will be a recommendation generated by the planning commission in light of the development goals with our comprehensive plan.
So I, I get all that, and I'm definitely fully aware of the process to make sure things are on the record. So there's, there's all been, in my opinion, I respect your views. We can't hear testimony, name, inhabit the minutes recorded, audio recorded. There's a lot of written comments that we have already received that we can add to the record. People can ask for them today at any point to be included in the record. The record, the decision still hasn't been adopted or made final. We adopted the staff report, which was up to a planning commission level. Often, in the last week, the last meeting, we closed the public record in the hearing, which, you know, most of you weren't at, but some, some I thought.
So I'm, I'm pretty unanointed disagree with that one. That, I, that would cause a procedural issue for both sides.
Yeah, so.
Cleanest route would be.
To re-hear.
People can do public comments, just under normal public comment if they so desire, and those could be forwarded to the planning commission. But again, if they want the full comment to be heard and the whole decision made, it's a, we cannot procedurally reopen the public record in itself. It's been remanded, and then it goes to planning, and then there will be another public hearing in the planning and at the next council meeting app subsequent to that.
That's, that's like, the, the decisions aren't approved and remanded, so it's going to happen. I was saying, if we've remanded it, any, the, the record is now open, and it's open. So there's no reason it's not to hear.
It is, but you also, you also have the issue of the applicant has the right to address questions and comments as they come forward. And that is going to be a procedural problem, I believe, without being at a hearing where there could be a back and forth in front of the planning commission. So I think, I think the procedural error there, if you go that direction.
Like, they could have admitted it to both sides. So, I mean, this gives them opportunity to hear what the public consent is, that they can address that further on in their, their planning as well.
And what I'm saying is, even if they can hear, it's not necessarily be a, it's part of the record, and then we don't have problems. If people want to give their comments, they should be done with both sides at the planning commission hearing so that you can fully develop. Because both sides, because both sides have, it's a bit of back and forth. Both sides have the right to address each others and have the right to respond to questions and things of that nature, because that's the nature of testimony then. So that's why it's a cleaner process, and that's anybody else's public remand.
But our public comment is not up, disallow people to comment today that are here on whatever they want to do.
That's right, they actually do have a right to do that.
We're just saying, at the planning commission level, say, if I've commented on this, at this meeting on June ninth, all comments I've made on that day, I'd like to project.
Make it do that, that's up to them.
And that, that's a, everybody time at the planning level, and, and obviously, we're gonna have back and forth. There's a lot of things around the forum, a lot that are against. So, you know, I'm just trying to say that we don't want to waste too much time today. If you want to be heard, please definitely give your comments. You know, we usually have a three man time on that.
I, I will remind everyone to choose to, that's also what it requires, a beta transfer of these. And again, that's, so that's a focus part. We do that, that's a public comment we do, we have that capabilities, but it can be more difficult than things may have to be as heard or as developed as people would like. So that's, the, those limitations are going to be doing, if you comment here tonight. So that's each one's individual choice.
So, so basically, they're free, they're, they're free to speak and say what they need to say, but they may be repeating themselves at the planning commission.
That's correct.
And we just can't have conversations about it.
That's right.
That's right.
It's much more direct process at a public.
Okay. Let's get on with this. I'm gonna, I'm gonna read something here. Public, public commentary. Citizens may address to council on items on the agenda or not on the agenda. Out of respect for the council and others in attendance, please limit your comments to three minutes, and please state your name and address for the record. Also, one person at a time, speak, because when you get several people trying to talk, we can't understand it on the recorder. There'll be no talking over anyone, or the meeting will be adjourned. Be respectful at all times so we can hear everyone's concerns. Everybody understand? Okay. Who wants to go first?
Just a reminder, please come to the podium because we're recording it. We want to make sure we get everything and speak loud. Thanks.
Okay, you've got three minutes.
Okay. Just for the record, my name is Michael Taylor, and Lakeview Sheriff. I heard about this about two days ago. It was stated that the sheriff's office is in support of this. The sheriff's office is not in support of this, and I was not consulted about this. So just so everybody knows, the sheriff's office has absolutely nothing to do with this, okay? I don't know anything about it, other than what I've heard through the room mail. We are not supporting this at any time. That's all I can say.
Okay. Who wants to go next? Go ahead.
Up here.
Yeah.
My name is Wayne Reher, and I got a letter from, from, first of all, I own property adjacent to the Lakeview office. Now, before I go any further, I'm not against homeless people. I thank the R.P. for providing for them. I'm not against my gardeners at all. When I got this letter, I understood that this was going to be a mostly family dwelling, not a place for homeless people. So I did attend the meeting. I didn't want to rain on my gardeners' parade. If they can do something with it, that's more power to them. But when I found out what's going on, when I read in the paper, all this stuff was going to put it not only for homeless people, a dog run and everything else. I, I have got my grandson and his three kids living next door to that neighborhood. I have deep concerns about bringing in homeless people in there and, and let them live there next door to my grandkids. Next thing, who's to say that it's just going to be local peoples that are going to be there? There's places in Planet Falls right now with the staff to take care of homeless people. Lakeview has gone crazy. We have not only, we've, we've embraced everything that's come along, and most of it is a failure. Now, I'm laying for shares, tax paid. I pay taxes here just like everybody else should. I'm sorry I raised my voice, but this is a real sore point to me. We keep handing out and handing out and handing out. At some point in time, people are gonna have to stand up and do something for themselves. I am in favor for people doing something for themselves, instead of having it handed to them on a platform. Now, you know, try your neighborhood and move some homeless people in there. See how it would feel. I don't think you'd like it, you will. This is ridiculous. It's like some of the stupid programs that the federal government comes up with, down to the state. And local. Now it's time, it's time people stood up and said enough is enough for the government. I've got about enough of this till it's coming out to my ears. This is not right. I think homeless people should be taken care of, but I honestly think that you ought to really look around and find someplace more suitable. And one other thing, before I finish. Brings. Everybody gets a brief. It's like I heard one stupid guy say he wanted healthcare for everybody, free school, everything should be free. Who's gonna pay for this, he says here? Three months, no? Okay. Who's gonna pay for this stuff? The government.
Okay. Who's next?
Thank you. My name is Ed Henry, 1238 North Third, Lakeview, Oregon. I'm a retired state police sergeant, also a retired sheriff. I do not support. I live in that area, a block away. A dog run, we have dogs in our area right now, and it's noisy already. And if you get dogs that have never been together, no way to get any sleep in that area. And the sheriff, and his fine people will be down there talking with them, and that does no good. And as I say, I do not support this program at all. Thank you.
My name is Nan Sharpless, 17507 Highway 395 South. I do take homeless people into my house from time to time because they need shelter. I can remember a time when I was living in the back of my car, and the only place that I was able to find shelter was at a church. From there, I worked at the church, and finally worked my way back to Lakeview, made my living as a school bus driver. What is being provided here in this Lakeview Lockers outfit is a place for people like me to get their bed out of the backseat of their car. And with prayer, and with help, and with stability, become a person who can add value to our wonderful community.
Anybody else?
Who else?
Thank you.
My name is Matt Eversole. I live at 804 North Second Street, just a few blocks away from the Lockers. We have a lot of homeless people already that walk up and down the street there. Mr. Newcomb takes in several, and they live there. Last night, right at dark, I have somebody over the fence yelling for Pastor Mike, so I have to send him down to his place. I don't like that, I'm not comfortable with people like that getting into my space. I think it's wrong to put these people in an area where they're constantly going to be traveling through these residential areas. We already have issues with them. I hear about it from my wife. I know what the sheriff's department deals with on a regular basis with these folks. We have one young man who comes to our home on a regular basis to talk to me. At night, we give him food. I'm not against these people, not in any way, but putting fifteen to eighteen beds, and then you have to multiply that probably by two because they're all gonna have partners. That's a lot of people in that little space. And these people, they can't even get along when they're out living where they're living or doing what they're doing because they're constantly having problems with the police. If we put them in a little area like that, I think you're looking for nothing but trouble. The whole way this whole thing has been set up, it just appears to be secretive, that nobody knew anything about this, the way it came out, and then on June fourth, I believe it was, something comes out on Lakeview announcements to explain this whole, this whole deal that they're doing. Why didn't this come out back, whenever this thing started? I think back in August of 2019 is when they started this. Nobody heard about it, nobody was told about it in this community. We are such a small community that you can't do things like this in this town without letting people know about it and having some input in it. I don't think, I don't think people in here are against homes in any way whatsoever, but we're certainly, we want to have a say in it. It's our community, we want to have a say in where this stuff goes and how it's done, not just a couple of people. That's wrong. So you need to start this whole thing over and be honest and open about how this is being done and where it's being done. And I think that the folks who are putting this on should sit, seriously consider doing smaller units with these people and separate them in different places so we don't have them all together. So we don't have a great big dog park in the middle of town. I've been to dog parks in bigger cities. Nothing but a problem. I've seen dog fights, I've seen horrible things happen. And if you mix in these folks who have these issues, we're gonna have more problems. These people that move into these units, they don't have to adhere to anything. They can be on drugs, they can be on, be drinking. And it said so right there in their little brochure, that they're not held accountable. And then they're put in as renters, and they have those rights as renters. People who are landlords that are here, they know what it's like to get a renter out that doesn't want to leave the premises. It's a long drawn out process. Okay. Thank you.
My name's Les Garcia. I live at 820 North Ninth Street. I moved here, I bought my home in November 2018 after researching many areas, a fortunate situation, and I have custody of my four year old granddaughter. So I wanted a small community, a safe community. I moved from Jackson County, where you go to the grocery store, your car might not be there when you get out of the store, and I didn't want that for my granddaughter. Now, just since moving here in November 2018, I've seen a lot of change, drastic change. I mean, it's so much different in just the year and a half since I first bought my home, and that greatly concerns me that this small community that I chose, now I have a mortgage, this is where I'm gonna be, this is where she started kindergarten in the mall. So I don't want this, this community to turn into a little men's bird. And that's what I see with this happening, that it's gonna attract, it's gonna attract more people that are not, I don't want to say quality people, but not constructive in the community, that adds something to this community. You know, to come over and basically move up with this good community and start giving this community a bad name where it turns into a small men's bird. Because also, I have to, I'll leave, because that's not what I want for my granddaughter. So I don't know enough about the, what's going on. I kind of saw it on Facebook and shock. You know, I don't get the newspaper, which obviously I do, but, you know, I definitely want to know what's going on in this community. I live in on the north, and I'm out of the circle, so I don't really see the circle except taking her to school without summer. You know, and then I see, you know, but it's only a matter of time before it murders all. So any problem that, you know, people are saying, well, don't you notice so and so, you know, works with hoodie all the time? No, don't see it where I live, but it's only a matter of time. Because once there is housing over here for the homeless, Planet Falls is gonna come over, and all the other places, you know, and then they're gonna take advantage of what our taxes go for. And if you're not gonna pay taxes in this community, I'm sorry, no law here. That's just how it is. That, that's how I believe. We pay our taxes for certain reasons, and I pay a lot of taxes on my house, I know that, you know, because I've compared my house with some houses in town, and I pay a lot of taxes, and I'm not sure why.
My name's Heather Eversole. I live at 804 North Second Street. And I listened to the town council meeting from now, almost two weeks ago, when Mayor Turner asked if this was gonna bring more homeless people to our community. And Eric Sarantin, who I love and think has a really good heart, said, hopefully people will come to Lakeview to be homeless. Then it happened that I took this petition around, trying to make the awareness be there and see how other people felt, because I didn't want to be the person that was saying, I don't want this in my neighborhood, even though that's the truth. And I came across a lady who only visits her for six months at a time. She works in Tillamook County, worked in Tillamook County, she's retired. And she actually worked with the homeless, she's a homeless counselor. And she flat out told me that that statement is not accurate because when they ran out of places for homeless people in Tillamook County within their jurisdiction, that they would actually transport people up to two counties away, not two cities away, but two counties away, trying to find them a place where it was, where there was room available. So I took note of that. And I was thinking about the homeless people because I do have heart, I do care about them, and I think when we are in a big city and we drive by and we see one person on the corner, and they look so lonely and destitute and sad, and you think when you're looking at it, what a lonely life that must be. Now, you might call me jaded, but for working at the sheriff's office, I can tell you that especially where, and I'll use the politically correct terminology that's in their application, the substance use disorder, those with substance use disorders have a lot more networking than what you or I might think that they do. There are people that show up in Lake County from Eugene, from Portland, and they know people here because their networking is as important to them as the networking that you have in a professional business. And so that's something to think about. And then my only other thought was that it does say there are 155 homeless in Lake County. Once again, in my job, I have the paperwork that's set up for civil papers for evictions. And so of that 155, I'm talking the people who go from home to home that know the eviction process is gonna take three, four months to get me out of there all the way. So yeah, I'm homeless in between these places because I'm not paying where I am or whatever's going on. And so, yeah, they do end up housing me at other people's houses, which is a concern that I have, that once you open up fifteen to eighteen units, how are you gonna keep people from not having the same houses coming in there? And that's all I have to say. Thank you.
Hello. My name is Teresa Dacher. I live at 15909, 7395. I think many of us here want to help the homeless. I've done a lot of reading in the last day, learning about supportive housing. There's transitional supportive housing, and there's permanent supportive housing. Of the two, I would tend to lean toward the permanent supportive housing. But I think we all need to learn more about it. I'm not in favor of putting transitional housing for the homeless right here in the middle of town. I do, I am in favor of helping these people. I think most of us are in favor of helping these people. So I think there's two issues. One is the zoning issue, and the other is getting more information to all of us so that we're more informed about what the opportunities are for the homeless there. There's a lot of homeless, I think, in North Lake County. I don't necessarily want to see them brought to Lakeview. I do want to learn more. I would like to ask the group that is putting this together to have a, a meeting, maybe open to public, so that we can be educated about what's going on and learn a little bit more about what the, what process is. I think that's probably about all I wanted to say. One more thing, there's moving, and the, the saying is, if you don't get a table coming in, and that concerns me. If you build a place with fifteen spots for homeless people, and we only have seven years, I'm afraid eight are gonna be brought in. And I, I, I think all of us are in favor of helping, but we just, we need more information, and I'm, I'm hoping that we'll get that out of this meeting.
I have my timer because I go long. My name is Eric Sarantin. I'm the guy with the big heart. 806 North Fourth Street, Lakeview, Oregon. I have been in the community for sixteen years. I have been in the community for 16 years, doing a lot of helping the people in troubled circumstances. I have been involved in trying to find a solution for our people that actually helps them change their lives. I am not about continuing homelessness. I am about ending homelessness. Ending homelessness, there is only one program that stops homelessness 75% of the time. That is permanent supportive housing. I have been studying that for years. A lot of fear, a lot of anger, a lot of supposition that this has been done behind the scenes or out of the way and no one's been talked to. I do want to announce next Tuesday, from 5:00 to 7:00 p.m., right here, we will be having a public meeting to number one, address every concern that everyone has. Number two, answer every question about what it means to help people in a permanent fashion, so that they don't live without accountability. That was never the intention. Number three, to inform, so that you know how the process works. How do we plan to help people? And so, yes, we will continue. Also, those of you who know me know that I am not sneaky. I don't sneak. I am open and available and anyone can talk to me at any time if you have questions. Most of you have my cell phone number. If you don't ask, you can't have it. I will talk to you. And let me just let you know, 100% of the time that I have talked with someone and worked with them through their fear of those people and have explained how we help them in a permanent fashion, because what we've done has not worked. They have come down in support of this project. I am not afraid of any conversation with anybody about this project. And I will be more than happy to inform anyone on this project.
Hi, my name is Mariah Adams. I live at 252 North L Street. I have four things. It stated, "Lakeview has 13 acres of land in the residential multifamily zone. This amount of land is sufficient to accommodate some multifamily growth over the next 20 years." I'd like to know why in the world we're rezoning if we have some acreage for the next 20 years that we can currently use? Number two, housing prices. My house price just went down the drain. I've been remodeling it for absolutely nothing. Nobody's going to want to buy my house. Number three, it's interesting. THS is specifically concerned with the people that are cycling through. These are people that are losing their children because of homelessness. Except for doing one bedroom apartments, is not going to be able to accommodate children. So, these people will not be able to have their children with them and then be able to move on. They're going to end up still stuck there. Number four, my concern, my kids walk by there all the time. I let them walk to school. That's a privilege that they earned this last school year. I'm not going to let that, I'm not even going to let me in my backyard anymore without, you know, because I live on a corner. So, people can get to my house from any direction they please. And my security with my six kids just went out the window. I don't trust anything. I'm ready to leave. You know, like I was in this home and I was good. I don't want to be here anymore. Because my children are not safe. We've already had to call the cops and the people that are going by before. I've had fireworks enter into my house. And you think putting this right here is going to solve all that? And my, no. It needs to go where the multifamily, a zoning already is located. I don't care if it's on a hill yet. Bolt those down the hill. We're going to sit there and remodel this entire thing. Use the money to do that. There's a place for this. Use it. Don't sit there and rezone.
My name's Keegan Feslinzey. I'm a resident of 118 North L Street. Those of you who know me know that I've lived on both sides of the tracks. I've worked in the groups, this community, and some help here in the recent president. It's taken me some time to turn my life around and understand what it's like to be on both sides, both wanting to help my community and wanting to help homeless people that were in my situation. But the fact is, this zoning is just improper. I would not, in any of my planning commissions that I'm involved in, upon helping raise crisis activity, we would never ever put a homeless shelter right in the middle of your community, right in the middle of a hardworking community like that. These types of things have to be planned and thought out strategically, so that the community can keep an eye on these people that are in this situation. They can be close by probation. They can be right there where they need to be to check in with probation or anything that they have to do. Setting them clear out in the middle of the community is setting our community up for failure and setting this up for failure. Location is everything. That's not all I have to say.
My name's Songi Matthews. My daughter, she owns a house two doors down from the Lakeview Lockers. I learned a new word last night, Ellen, you guys were telling me during my homework. Comorbidity. Basically means that you're an addict, you have mental illness. And if you're, you have mental illness, it's likely you're an addict. Moving away from that point for just two seconds. Tell you a story about how ill-prepared Lakeview is for this. A year and a half ago, when I opened my restaurant in Talltown, one night, Ryan Davidson brings this guy and he tells my staff, "He's a little out of it, but he's volatile. Be careful." Sheriff's Department guy is creeping around, everybody's looking at this guy. He was dangerous. Nobody knew what to do with this man, because the hospital picked him out. I jumped my tailor and he said, "Well, they wouldn't like me put him in jail, but that would have violated his civil rights." So, they put him in a hotel room across the street, unsupervised. I don't know if he's medicated, I don't know anything. He was giant, he was from Christmas Valley. He was insane. They turned him loose on the public. He came back over to my restaurant and proceeded to try and masturbate while watching two girls outside my cafe by the banetay. This is Lake District Health. Tell me I can trust you.
There you go.
My name is Denise Lenzey. I live at 118 North L Street. Forty years of living there. Forty years of slum lords, but it's no longer there anymore. Forty years of having a sibling who is an addict and mentally disturbed, who has been informed he cannot come to my house, he's so unstable. Chronically homeless he is. I have lived with addiction and mental illness all my life. There are hoarders. They don't trust each other. So, you're going to put hoarders and people who don't trust each other in a small area and expect peace? Expect things to work out? And then you're going to throw a dog run in there? How many homeless people do you see in this town with their dogs, running behind them without a leash? Running up into your yard, to your children? I've seen it over and over again. We cannot control what goes on in our community any more than we can control what's going to go on into that sort of unit. We cannot keep our children safe. If you're planning on putting them in our neighborhood, it won't happen. When you speak of helping the homeless, you're not only helping the homeless, but you're helping the mentally impaired addicts. And this is not the community to do that. I know that. I've sought help for my addict children and my brother. I'm still wondering, who was equipped in this community to make sure that this is operated safely and continuously?
Hi, my name is Calvet and my friends listen to everybody in here. I don't even know why I'm talking, because I'm not sure which way I am. But I do know that for 10 years, I worked at the senior center and I lived in the programs department there. The planning programs for poverty, planning for anything from mental health to food to... What I'm saying is I took Poverty 101 class, college course twice. And if you ever get a chance to research the lady, I'm going to have her name on top of my head, because I'm old. But I do have her book at home. She came from a carnival. And what we call a carney from her whole childhood and lived in a car. Well, she's now not only got her master's, but she's also got her doctorate. She is from a family of 11 children. And she has now educated five of her siblings. Here's my point. Okay, so if we put this in here, are we going to do a teaching program? Because she will flat tell you, you don't get, because you hinder. You educate, that's how you help. Are we going to have an educated program here that these people are going to take to learn to stand on their feet, to be, to help their... You know what? Am I making sense at all? So, that's my thing is there's going to be a program to help these people, not just help these people.
My name's Stuart Stewart. I'm at 429 South Line. Yeah, I'm a little bit away from that area. However, I do want to say I think it's a great idea. Maybe just not quite a great location. There was some ideas that I'm going to throw out there. What happened to Habitat for Humanity? I see a lot of abandoned houses around here. What happened to the tiny homes idea that was thrown out there about a year or two ago? The other thing, Recovery Homes up in front of about a year and a half ago or so. What happened to it? The Oris, Oregon statutes, perhaps have to put out there, have to do all this. And I'll put it all together. Somebody just has to get the ball and have a good pen and write it up. I don't have that feeling. The structure of these houses that I'm talking about, I don't see accountability. I didn't see it. And, you know, I concur, a lot of things are being said around here. You know, I too was homeless. And I was raised to get off my ass and go do something. And I started out, somebody said, "Hey, pitch your tent in the backyard, pitch your work." That's what I did. And I was homeless for about a year. And I got my shit together, I got moved up, I got to college, got some schooling in. And I was able to better myself. You know, I come back home and I do a lot better. I've done a lot for myself. And because of the networking that I'm aware of is what's helped me. Because I was really, and that's the biggest key word, I was failing to do what it ever took to get out of where I was.
My name is Holly Gallagher. I've lived here for just about 18 months. When I got here, I was a bachelor and I needed a lot of help. I was also homeless. I'm from Modesto, California. I'm 37 years old. I have two children that don't live here. I also wanted the help. I wanted to change. I could easily be out there doing what I did before and wrecking this community up. But this community is probably the best thing that's ever happened to me. And it's because of people taking a risk on somebody like me, that I'm where I'm at today. I owe you guys my life. I owe God my life, because I shouldn't be alive. I should be dead. With finding a program like this, you're taking on a lot of personalities. Personalities that might not get along, personalities that might clash, personalities that might go against this town and what it represents and what it is today. Like I said, I wanted to change.
There you go.
Today.
Anybody else?
I, in general, I'm for this project in a way. And yeah, partly it's because I've been a homeless person so far. Not me homeless, but I've taken care of homeless people for 20 years in my backyard. The lady worked at that, they gave me a house. They turned their house over to me when, well, a while before they passed away. And our hearts always been used to use it for ministry. Mostly it's been people get out of jail, just need a spot for a day or two and then they shoot on out of here. We've had a low pay relationship with the sheriff's department, because a lot of times they kick people out of jail at 7:00 in the evening. Where are they going to go? They are instantly homeless and they have no money. And so, they have been having my back. And at present, we have around five of those people right now. But the thing is, you already have them in your neighborhood. They're just walking all over the place and looking for resources. I kind of like to see them have a spot where they can rest, put down some roots of any sort and be stable. Because once you're in, you know you're already going to sleep that night, it solves a lot of stuff. But if you're dealing with poverty and homelessness and usually some substance abuse thrown in for good natured, yeah, it's going to be a little bit crazy. I've had so many success stories, you would encourage you all. It's one thing to say, "I really want, I'm concerned about homeless. I want to help the homeless." That does no good. You're still homeless and you're still isolated. You got to do something about it. And so, I don't know about the location, we know a lot about the details of this thing. But all I know is they give us a real sense of, okay. I'm thinking particular people. Most of them are single. Most of them do couches. They are thrust into places where everybody around them is doing drugs and they're trying to get free from it. And their environment, it just kills their guts. Ready to death. And they're always coming to me, "Well, I have a list now. Is that house, have any vacancy in it yet?" "Do you agree?" "No, it's got to wait." And I know I probably haven't helped the neighborhood too much. I mean, my people walk around. But mostly they stay home and are secure. They're not messing around, they're not stealing other people's stuff by March, because they've got resources, they've got a place to live.
I've got you all. Okay.
Thanks for watching. Anybody else?
My name is Kim Lander and I just wanted to make a comment here. I understand homelessness is an issue. It always has been, so does mental health in this little town. It hasn't really done anything. Actually, the sheriff's department, that's where they end up with the mental health issue. Does anybody here know Jacob Steele? Yeah? Okay, well, let me explain something to you. That guy is homeless, okay? But he's also a thief. And he's also unpredictable in the most dangerous way. So, I just, people like that, like that, whoever said those people... So I just, people like that, like that, whoever said those people, they, he lived across the street from me, him and his buddies, my buddies, were living across the street from me for over twelve years. They were squatting. I could not stand having him and his buddies across the street from me. Thank God, the sheriff got it all cleaned out, but now we're just going to shove it to another neighborhood and that's going to be an issue. And that's all I wanted to say. Thank you.
Really bad at public speaking, so let me start. My name is Jolene Wright. I live at 304 North L. Lived in this community for most of my life, but solidly for the past eighteen years. This community is very, a loving community, a very parents' community. At least what I've had the experience with, that we are all open to helping people that we can hear that. And I think that this project could be a great idea and it is a need. I just don't agree with the location. I think that's most of everybody's problem of significance. We're smack dab in the middle of a residential community with a lot of children and Kim pointed out, a lot of times, that these people are unpredictable. For those of you that don't know, I'm a nurse in the hospital and we see a lot of mental health people come through there. It makes me extremely uncomfortable to know that this dangerous person that we couldn't find placement for in one of seven, well, people that were among themselves can't find placement for them, so then we release them into the community. It's really bothersome for me to know that that person could be seen literally just doors down from me. And I was their nurse and sometimes we have to do things that, you know, they don't necessarily bite us a lot for. Makes me nervous that my kids live in that neighborhood and all of these other kids live in that neighborhood. And like I said, sometimes these people are unpredictable. The theft in our community is bad and it tends to be worse with those people, sorry, And it worries me to put it right in the center of all of our houses where we have tried for a long time to get rid of some of the, with wrath, if you will. And we are just now finally starting to get to a place, I believe in the neighborhood, where we are having so many problems. Some neighbors on the street bought, I think, bikes right next to them to keep people out of it because the people that were in there kept destroying the property and breaking into their houses and stealing things from them and their yard. Like I said, I'm not against homeless people. I'm all for helping them. I am not at all educated on where to begin with that. I would be willing to be educated on how to help if I can. Just ask you please, please reconsider the location. There's a lot of places in this town that could be utilized for such a great cause. Thanks.
My name is Robert Asher. Some of you might know me. I don't live in town. And then at 26143 Skyfield Road, I'm fifteen miles out, so I feel pretty safe. I'm not a vampire. I'm actually for helping them. I'm concerned because when I was a kid, mom, I had eight kids in my family. So whenever a rowing showed up, they had eight too. And so here we had sixteen in there and all the kids were fighting and arguing, or someone was wanting to help pay, you know, on the floor. It's about love to me, but I, I think we need to love, we don't know a lot about, I don't know a lot about the homeless. I just know that as I have changed in my life, my heart's changed. And I've changed to, to love and that's, that's what, that's what I'm feeling right now. But I do love what has happened in this room, is that you're talking about it, that you're not just arguing about it. So that's a sign of love in its own way, that you care about this community. My wife and I have lived here for fifty years. We've raised the kids in this community, in a safe community. And in my own personal eyes, what I see right now, I don't see that the homeless is really a whole big problem as far as some of the things that are going on around the streets, stealing, the other things like that. I think there's some other things in this community that have been put in that are not right, causing a lot of the things that are going on is, that's just what I have in my heart, that's what I feel. We are always going to love this community. We will never leave this community, we're going to die here. And even though we don't live right in this community, which we have, we still love this town. And I know that you all do too, because you're here. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Sarah Saransky. I live at 806 North L. I'm also terrible at public speaking, but there are two things that I'd like to say. One is about the location. I think there's some things that everybody might tell me understand and that's private property. Like, oh, this is their property. The town can't just say, we think this is the best location and that's where it's going to be because it's, you know, away from there and it's close to this. The town isn't designating the location. The only control anyone has over the location is if somebody will donate their property for the cause. And if somebody is willing to do that and save that neighborhood from the horrible people, then I would love it, you know, that's great. The second thing that I think people might try to really understand is property taxes. And I think it's important to say that the tax sellers going towards this project are state level. Their taxes people are going to pay and their taxes that are going to go to some community. And so why not bring them to Lakeview? Why not benefit from state level taxes? From what I understand, it's not property tax dollars under the project. The third thing is the assumption that people are going to stay the same, that they're going to move into a permanent unit, a permanent apartment, they're going to give their fee under them and they're going to stay the same because they like doing drugs, that they like their mental illness going unmedicated, they like being where they are. By and large, people are not happy when they're homeless, they're not happy being addicted to substances. You give them a place, you give them the under them, they can take their showers, they can go and get a job, you give them stability in their lives and often a lot of these problems they work on and they work hard on this. Thank you.
I wasn't speaking, but I feel I'm going to do it now. My name is Emily Henry. I live at 1238 North J Street. Before I moved to Lakeview, I worked at the Ashland Police Department, the biggest in the state of my life. I'm conservative and I tell you that, town running with nipples. I was the detective's private secretary, I had the beauty secretary for the homeless and I hated it. I wanted to yell at those people. They wanted them in their homes, they wanted to give them everything. The homeless people loved it. They loved Ashland, they blocked at Ashland, no questions asked. They showed them at the police department, they wanted a food voucher, they wanted a gas voucher. We couldn't even run Watson records or anything on them. We put them right back in the community, we gave whatever they want. You saw them get out of their car, there were six of them, you gave six vouchers. That lasts a long time and that's all I have to say.
My name is Melanie Sykes and I'm at 123 North J Street. And my husband, I rent from pastors, Mike and Bada, we are part of the church family. And I spent many years volunteering at the food share where I saw it a lot. I grew up, you're on the front lines when you see people, homeless people, you're on the front lines. I've had angry people in my face, demanding things. And you will be surprised at what one soft, kind word will do to help a wounded soul on a step to a healing process. That's what this whole thing's about. The people who don't have skills, I look across from Mike and Bada, I see things, I hear things, I'm part of that. I see people who get healed, safe and delivered, they move on, they move on, they get, we hold them accountable, we hold them accountable, that's the whole thing. Because I think people think they're just going to get, you know, nothing, but no. You give a man a fish, you teach him how to fish, that's what we do. And like I said, I've just seen many changes. People come through the food share, I've seen a lot of homelessness sets, the pop shops have come in. And I've seen more aggressiveness because there's just addiction, addiction. But once again, one small, kind word will make someone's whole day and change it and they go away thinking, you know, maybe I am worth something. Maybe I'm not just trash, maybe someone loves me and will help me get to my goal that I had at one time, only got lost through addiction. So that's it.
Anybody else?
My name is Shannon Maryfield. I live at 219 North L Street. I literally share a driveway with the lockers. I think that what the big problem is, is that, yeah, I don't have a problem helping the homeless, the mentally ill, the drug addicts. I lived, at thirteen years old, I helped raise my niece and nephew because my sister was an addict. I don't have a problem helping. That's not my issue. The location is my issue. Yeah, some of them will be helped. I understand that. But without the accountability of them having to take those services that are offered, most of them aren't going to be helped. Those are the ones that the neighborhood is worried about. Those are the ones that are going to hurt us. Those are the ones that are going to be stealing. Those are the ones that are going to be fighting. Those are the ones that we're constantly going to have to be calling the sheriff's office about. Those are the ones that make me nervous. I personally have a thirty-year-old that has problems herself that I deal with on a daily basis. I will never live without my thirty-year-old daughter. I also have a thirteen-year-old teenage daughter. This scares me to death. I don't want us to have to worry about this. I am all for helping people. But we, we got to do something about the location. This is, this is just not, this is just not right. There's got to be some other place to do this. The location is just not right. We've got to find another place to do this. There's too many kids and the dog park across the street, I hear, I have dogs, I know what our neighborhood's like. It's crazy. You get other people's dogs running around in there, people on the south end are going to hear us. We can't put a dog park in town for the town of Lakeview, but we're going to put a dog park in for a homeless shelter or mentally ill? That's not fair. We've got dogs running all over town that can't be contained, but now we're going to put a dog park in across the street from my house? That's not caring. Rhonda's constantly chasing dogs all over town, constantly. We got to do something about that before we put in a dog park for a place that's for homeless people. Let's do one thing at a time. I'm okay with helping people, I'm perfectly fine with helping people, I will get the shirt off of my back for somebody. Thank you.
Anybody else?
So, I'm Ross McCarver. I don't like being wrong, so thank you for coming. I apologize that we didn't do this way earlier on. We got the building back a year ago and it's not used, it'll never be reprocessing plan again. We sat and partied a lot, like, what are we going to do with this building? And it came to our attention that there was a need for housing for those in, and the project has been worked on by multiple agencies, a lot of them under the Financial Health District, we have a lot of applicants and projects. And they had looked for a property owner that would come alongside to do this, that's why we're here. Maybe the location's not good. The state has allocated a lot of money to make this happen. It won't be the same building, it won't be a free-for-all. There probably won't be a dog. Sounds like that would be a really bad idea to start with. But I think there's a community we can work through this, maybe there's a better place for it. Personally, I can't afford to take that building down, I can't afford to clean it up. So it's going to be a big building with people because they'll break the windows out and they'll be in there, you can keep that building, it might hold. So where, what are we going to do? So come Tuesday night, I think, and we'll present what we learned, we went through training to, actually to get access to the state dollars as a cohort, so it's not one person, it's not one agency. There's, it's a, we're just trying to address some of the problems that are there and maybe there's a way we can do it somewhere else. The state's going to spend money, it's not going to be affected on your local tax dollars, it's actually going to save the local agencies money because a lot of these people that they're serving will actually be in one place and not have to go to several places and try to find them. So anyway, that's all that matters. Thank you.
My name is Hamon Lam. I live at 345 Southeast L. I own two properties, there's basically a lot of them possibly. And I'd like to just mention that I've spent years on those properties, okay? Many, many weekends, thousands and thousands of dollars to bring those from what they were for to what they are now. And I plan on continuing to improve these properties, all right? So right now, I house mostly young professionals at the hospital, it's a place to be, because rentals are difficult to discount, okay? So essentially, I understand there's a need in this community and I am all for trying to help people, I'm all for first chances, second chances, and third chances, okay? What you're asking though is for, what I hear is going to happen. People are going to come in, we're saying people are going to improve. What I feel and what I hear is that we're going to have a mill, a cycle, of people with substance abuse coming in, maybe getting better, maybe going out. But that's what, that's what I hear here, okay? That's what I'm afraid of. Now, when this happens, what's going to happen to what my work, what I've done, the money that I've put in, the time that I've spent with my peers who are off loading their campaigns, right? The weekends and nights, the time I spent with my kids there, right? All this is not the same. All this is essentially, like, I'm not going to be able to rent my same apartment out for a certain, the erratic reaction of this community has proven it. Now, whether it's good or bad or different, we're not all Eric Swanson, people that I have there, not everyone wants to be there. So what does that do? What does that do for mine, that's what I'm trying to build for my children, I'm trying to afford to send my kids on admissions, right? Pay for their college. I don't have any of that, okay? So this affects me. Now, I think, great, let's find a way to help people, right? Let's come together as a community. But this is personally going to be at a great cost for me. I feel that I would be required to pay for the consequences of somebody else's actions, right? Now, I'm happy to help, okay? But I'm not willing to throw away my nights and my weekends and all of the extra money that my family has sacrificed through years for this. Well, that's my perspective. I'm happy to get together and talk with people. I'm happy to try to find a positive solution, okay? Let's do it together. But I'm opposed to this location because of how it affects me. But I have to say.
Hi, my name is Nicole McKeesman. I don't live here as of yet. My mom and my niece do. They own a house on 820 North 9th. My husband and I are looking into doing, yeah, and looking into some property around here. I'm from Josephine County. We live out in a little small town called Ireland, kind of like this. We watched things like this happen out there and I'm tremendously concerned just because of what we've watched personally happen. And I'm not sure, like, I don't know all the details on this. I'm definitely going to be looking into it. But there was a really big problem with the homeless that moved into the situation that was out there and they were registered sex offenders. And I don't know if that's due to or whatnot. It raised a huge flag. Especially with my niece, you know, she's a super cutie. It's already on my mind about things like that. So that's one of my top concerns is, is that, has that been talked about or is that going to be allowed? Is that not going to be allowed? Or is there going to be checks on these people coming in? You know, they're going to be, you know, coming in from other communities possibly. It's like there's extra beds sent in to be filled. So that's one of my main concerns and I didn't hear it being brought up yet. So that was my first concern when I heard about it, just watching it happen in Josephine County. And it became a huge thing and they did get busted from other places that didn't want to take registered sex offenders. And then it, you know, they moved in their buddies. And then before you knew it, you had, you know, six of them just right there. There's parks and they're right around the children and it was a huge, huge concern of mine. So that's definitely something my husband and I are going to be looking into. And I didn't hear anybody else think about that or mention it, but it was surprising. That's all I have to say.
Hey, anybody else?
I'm supposed to be a good public speaker, but it's a test. But I really can't. And so I'm not going to be going to my door to change. There's just people who need help and you all say you want to help. But I have to note that Eric, he's been very hard on this. And then Ross and Joy have emerged very hard on this. And then we as, as a church body have looked long and hard on projects like this that would work. And there's going to be actually a person that lives in the building that these people are accountable to, that will give them services and that will help them. It's not like we're just dumping them all in there and saying, do whatever you want. That's not what this looks like. It's, you know, we've looked for a long time. We've looked at property. Our church has thought about buying property where we could put people in. And our big thing was, we really didn't have a person that could administer them. We just couldn't find that. But there, but there's going to be a person hired to do that, that will make good money doing that, that is a professional, that will take care of them. And so, you know, I just, I just know there's been a lot of effort in this. And it just, it just seems to be coming at an interesting time when we're talking about those people and we're memorializing George Floyd. And those people are met because nobody takes them serious. You know, I mean, this feels like a those people and we want to help kind of thing. And that's not who we are as a community. We're, we have homeless people. They all know our suffering. They may not all know Eric's yet, but they all know my suffering. And there really is a list of people. And we don't do the very best at policing or helping, but we're trying to help. And they're already in your, in your area. If you live near us, they're already there. And a lot of others come in. We try to keep them, you know, try to keep them out, but, but somebody's got to step up and help because they're already here. Nobody's going to be busing anybody in here. We've got plenty to fill this void. Guaranteed. And so, so I'm just saying, we have to help. We are a community who helps, okay? And so.
Anybody else?
Gerald Stewart, in Park Place. I would just like to say it does my heart good to see all of you come forward with your concerns. I too had a lot of concerns. And I, some months ago, said, Eric, what in the world are you thinking? But I took the time to sit down with him to get some answers, to have some of my concerns answered. So I'm thankful that they're putting together an informational meeting. If we can educate ourselves and come together as a community, we're all going to be so much better for it. So I thank you all for your concerns. Hopefully they can be addressed in a manner that is going to serve our community. I've lived here for 78 years. I consider this the center of the universe. You can get any place from here. I will remain here, hopefully till my dying day. And I ask that you all support and try to do what is right for yourselves, but is right for your neighbors. Thank you.
I'm Monica. I live on the west side. We own two of seven North L Lakeview Lockers. And there's so many things that have resonated with me, but particularly 345 E. You know, we also, you know, spent our life's blood resurrecting that property the first time. And had we not, what you would be next to would be a very smelly, maggot-infested, difficult place to be by. And I would pat myself on the back for that because that was a huge, huge endeavor. And we did what we could with the facility. We made it, I think, you know, a pretty amazing location for people to visit. They would come and it was kind of a gem in our community. And it's not a gem anymore and I can't picture it. And so like my husband said, we sat in the parking lot and we went, what are we going to do with this? What are we going to do with this? And, and the answer was housing. It just made sense to do housing. And like everything else we've ever done, we figured we need to do it alone. And that's where we started the process of, to do it alone. This is going to be a, you know, what can it be? You know, and so you look into planning and you ask the questions and you talk to all the people. And, and then through the course of all of those things, then we were, then it was brought to our intention, these people that have worked for ages. What we thought, what we thought was a multi-agency effort turns out to not be that. That needs to be reconsidered. But what we saw was that there was this urgency and this need that needed to be met in the community. So then we set out, we educate ourselves. We don't, we don't know this. We don't know any of this stuff. We don't know what people need or how they need it. But I'll tell you one poignant thing besides the training. So six-month commitment of training, important, with people that know these programs, that know what permanent supportive housing can and does in their communities. The one poignant thing for me personally was having three foster kids that have stayed with us for three years now. And one snowy evening, we were getting out of dance class and we encounter their mother. And it's very awkward, it's very difficult, it's very sad. And, but she's packing all this stuff and they say, where are you, where are you going? And she says, oh, I live down there now. And I said, well, you can't walk that far. We'll just take you. And so we loaded her up in the car and she told me where to go. And we parked and she got out in front of a woodshed. She was living in a woodshed. And personal choices for adults, you know, I'm, I'm all for you. Pull yourself up by your bootstraps, do your own damn thing, make yourself, you know, worthy. She wasn't able. And I unloaded her in that, at that woodshed and then I listened to that little boy cry for four nights because his mother was living in a woodshed. Those are the people that we want to help. And there's one other one who happens to be my very own father, who's a veteran and has suffered mental illness his entire life. He's, he's made silly decisions, he's done stupid things. I don't think he's dangerous, but I don't know. Okay, thank you.
Anybody else? Eric Dunn. And we will adjourn the meeting and we will, in a couple, we will discuss this further.
Go to planning at this point and then, once we get the recommendations from planning, we'll.
We'll move on from there.
I do recommend that all of you show up at the planning. It'll be in the paper. We will put it on the Town Facebook page and the Town website. But I would really encourage everybody to show up at the, for planning.
You're allowed to know what meetings.
It'll be in the newspaper and it'll be on the Town website and on Facebook. I'm really happy to see this meeting. I really am. I'd like to see more of these type of meetings where the community gets more involved in what's going on in this town. Because a lot of things get passed and we don't hear about it till afterwards and I feel really mad. So, you know, I really encourage you guys to please show up at meetings.
So the one that Eric was talking about next, to stay in.
Next Tuesday, 5:00 to 7:00 PM, right here.
And that's just, that's not obviously the place. That's you guys.
That's just us.
That's informational, probably.
Informational.
Yeah.
It's the town or the planning. I'm probably.
And I'd like to thank the public for the contact. I think it's really great to see everybody all attended, seated, meeting. Their kids in the room, it was really nice to set an example for them. So I appreciate the fact that when we all leave here, we're still all friends, which we've lost many. So thank you, everybody, for the contact. I appreciate it.